So, welcome. Welcome. Seeing Quorum, the chair opens up the meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board. Today is Wednesday, July 17th, 2024. The time is a little bit past seven o'clock, 7:04 PM. We're here at Mashpee Town Hall in the Wacoit Meeting Room, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass., 02649. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live on local Channel 8. We're streamlined on the town and Mashpee website, www.mashpeeMA.gov/CHAN. I just want to thank everybody for their patience. We had executive session before this meeting. Please don't ask us what happened in executive session. We can't tell you until the matter is resolved. Then we'll publish minutes at that time. I'd like to invite everybody to stand and rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, we have a public hearing at seven o'clock, but before that, we can look at our meeting minutes. In our packet is June 5th, 2024. Just looking at them real quick. They look fine to me. Any comments or corrections from people? If not, I'd accept a motion to accept the minutes of June 5th, 2024 as presented.
It's okay. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I think the June 25th minutes were from our workshop, but those are pending. So, I think in the next three minutes, I'll do the Chair's report. So, the Chair's activity, I have met twice with the town manager, Rodney Collins. I newly elected the Chair, so I talked to Rodney about that. I was able to arrange town council to come meet with us in executive session tonight. Also, you know, we're having a planning department staff change. I don't know, Evan, if you want to talk about your new schedule right now?
Sure. I'm stinking around in a very limited capacity until a successor is appointed. My general schedule is Tuesdays and Thursdays, 8:30 to 4:30. As responsive to email as possible in those days, I'm not present, with some Wednesday morning availability should it be required. But Tuesdays and Thursdays, I'll be in the building until something else changes.
And Planning Board meetings?
And then Planning Board meetings, correct.
Thank you. That's good. And I just want to let you know, the job opening was posted, I think, until June 3rd, and applications were received, and interviews are happening, and things are going forward. That's all I can say. So, we have a wonderful human resource department that has a lot of really good rules. So, that's what's going on there. Okay, we have three more minutes. Any update, real quick update, on the town planners list? How about the hazard mitigation?
We did present the hazard mitigation plan finally to the Select Board on Monday night, which was accepted by them, and the plan will now be submitted to FEMA for federal review and hopeful acceptance by them. When the town receives approval of that plan by the federal government, the town then becomes eligible for numerous grant opportunities for the projects and actions identified in that particular document intended to mitigate the risks of future natural hazards.
And as Harbor Management, is that a quick update?
Harbor Management hasn't met recently, largely due to Quorum-related challenges, but the plan has been progressing, but no changes since the last I updated you substantively.
Okay. And let's do Board Member Committee reports real quick. Cape Cod Commission, I have no update. Charter Review Committee, we meet next Monday, July 22nd. I believe it's a six o'clock start. I think our goal was to get onto the October Town Meeting warrant. That doesn't seem possible, but we might have a make lemon out of lemonades and maybe have some used town meeting gathering to ask people some more questions about the Charter. Community Preservation Committee, we're looking at two acquisition possibilities. One is Gooseberry Island. The other one is, I believe it's four, is it four or five acres along 151, the bottom of John's Pond. And so, it's 475 Route 150.
It's a gorgeous property.
It's waterfront property. It's got four small little units there. And, you know, I can, I think I can safely say the owners are very interested in partnering with the town for that project. It could be a very nice recreational facility for the town, plus some open space. I think it has a potential rental pool on it. Design Review?
No meeting.
Plan Review?
No meeting.
Environmental Oversight Committee?
No meeting.
Historic District?
No meeting.
And just one more update on the Community Preservation Committee. That application for the feasibility study for the bike trails through our open space throughout town, that's been withdrawn because the project proponent met with the Environmental Oversight Committee, and they felt that they have money for an open space and rec plan, and they felt that that would be folded into that study. So, we didn't have to allocate any more money on that. Okay. Seeing that the appointed time arrived, it's 7:10, the Chair opens up the 7:10 public hearing. The applicant is New Seaberry Homes LLC off the western sideline of Great Oak Road between Red Brook Road and Sips Road, and identified as map 110 parcels 58, 59, 80, 82, 83, and 97. And Michael, do you want to recuse yourself at this time?
I'd probably not, but I have to.
Okay, all right. The applicant requests a special permit for a cluster subdivision. The applicant proposes to divide the properties identified on Mashpee's Assessor's Map 110 Parcels 58, 59, 80, 82, 83, and 97, and which are addressed as 52 and 58 Red Brook Road and 23, 29, 41, and 47 Great Oak Road, comprised of 31864 square feet into seven new building lots ranging in size from 15,016 square feet to 17,083 feet, square feet, sorry. The applicant proposes that the Planning Board authorizes minimum lot sizes of 10,000 square feet with 15-foot side and rear setbacks with 40-foot front setbacks while preserving 181,266 square feet as protected open space, which is 57% of the total land area. Okay. I have to read into the record Mashpee Planning Board Public Hearing Notice pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 48, Section 9, and the Mashpee Zoning Bylaw, Section 174-24C and 17447, the Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 15th, 2024, at 7:10 PM, which has been continued to now, in the Wacoit Meeting Room at the Mashpee Town Hall at 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. 02649, to consider an application made by New Seaberry Homes LLC for approval of special permit for a cluster subdivision. The applicant proposes to divide the properties identified in the Mashpee Assessor's Map 110 Parcels 58, 59, 80, 82, 83, and 97, and which are addressed as 52 and 58 Red Brook Road and 23, 29, 41, and 47 Great Oak Road comprised of 31864 square feet into seven new building lots ranging in size between 15,016 square feet and 17,083 square feet. The applicant proposes that the Planning Board authorize minimum lot sizes of 10,000 square feet with 15-foot side and rear setbacks and 40-foot front setbacks while preserving 181,266, 266 square feet as protected open space, 57% of the total land area. The plans and submitted application can be viewed in the offices of the Town Clerk or the Town Planner submitted by Karen D. Faulkner, Chair. Publication dates Friday, April 19th, 2024, and Friday, April 26th, 2024. Okay, next. The Chair opens up the 7:15 public hearing. The applicant is New Seaberry Homes LLC off the western sideline of Great Oak Road between Red Brook Road and Sips Road, and identified as map 110 Parcels 58, 59, 80, 83, and 97. Is the other public hearing notice in here? Okay. Okay. I'll read the public hearing notice into the record. Mashpee Planning Board Public Hearing Notice pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 41, Section 81T, and the Mashpee Rules and Regulations Governing the Subdivision of Land, the Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 15th, 2024, at 7:15, in the Wacoit Meeting Room at the Mashpee Town Hall at Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. 02649, to consider an application made by New Seaberry Homes LLC for approval of a definitive subdivision plan of land that would divide six parcels into seven building lots off of Great Oak Road and Red Brook Road. The properties are identified on Mashpee's Assessor's Map 110 Parcels 58, 59, 80, 82, 83, and 97, and are addressed as 52 and 58 Red Brook Road and 23, 29, 41, and 47 Great Oak Road. The submitted plans proposes to create lots that are between 15,016 square feet and 17,083 square feet in size, and proposes to protect 181,266 square feet of land as open space. The lots proposed should be accessible by, would be accessible by a cul-de-sac road called Osprey Court. Plans may be reviewed in the offices of the Town Clerk or Town Planner at Mashpee Town Hall submitted by Karen D. Faulkner, Chair. Mashpee Planning Board Publication Dates Friday, April 19th, 2024, and Friday, April 26th, 2024. And I just want to note that Michael Richardson has recused himself and that Rob Hanson has been seated on this matter. And first off, I'd like to recognize the applicant.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, my name is Brian Yergation. I'm a professional engineer with BSC Group. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, New Seaberry Homes LLC. Also with us, with me tonight in the audience is Nick Galanis from New Seaberry Homes, and attorney Rob Mills, who's legal counsel for the applicant. Since we were, since we were last before you, well, I guess the meeting was opened in last month in June. We were not here to take any testimony, but we did receive a list of, a total of 11 questions, which came from the Chair through the, through the Town Planner. So, what we'd like to do is we're not presenting any new plans tonight. The plans have remained as is, but I'd like to run through those 11 questions and give you the answers that you requested.
So, these were, these were a summary of public comment and also questions from the Board. As you know, we did open the public hearing, and the applicant wasn't here. So, I tried to really focus on what happened at that meeting to make sure that everything got addressed. So, go ahead, Brian. Thank you.
Great. All right. So, the first question, what is the update of the archaeological survey by PAL? Is the tribal historic preservation officer involved, and what's the historic value of the site? So, PAL has completed their archaeological survey of the project area. They did not identify any archaeological materials or features. PAL will be, will not be recommending any further investigations. PAL did inform the tribal preservation officer in advance of the survey, but they did not witness anyone on-site during the field evaluations. Upon completion, though, PAL will provide a copy of the report once it is submitted to the state archaeologist's office. Second question.
Does that ever come to us, or is that confidential?
Nope. I mean, we're just going to be submitting it to the tribe, so, you know, we can submit it to you as well.
Okay.
Next question, how could we, how can we calm traffic at the intersection of Red Brook, Great Oak Road, and Great Neck Road South? So, the applicant reached out to the Department of Public Works after the meeting in May. There has been some recent correspondence from Catherine Laurent, the Director of Public Works, to the Town Planner in regard to our inquiry, but I, rather than read that, I can summarize it for you. The DPW reviewed the intersection and ultimately determined that improvements are not warranted. The intersection has a very low crash rate, more than adequate site distance, and is further controlled by stop signs on two legs of the intersection. Traffic increases due to the development of the proposed subdivision will be minimal, and that's not my opinion. That's the opinion of the, of the Director of Public Works. Number three, what is the revegetation plan in the open space area where the existing building, et cetera, is being removed? So, once the remnants of the old dwelling and the old garage are demolished, the plan is that we're going to leave the area to naturalize on its own. If you, if you look at the photos that we, that we had taken, I don't know if I had submitted them to you, but it's, to call it a dwelling and a garage is quite the overstatement. It's quite decrepit condition, and the area really has started to naturalize on its own.
There was some talk about putting wood chips down?
Well, I had mentioned that, and then I think somebody didn't like that idea, but, so, I mean, the plan, and I've talked to our, one of our senior landscape architects about this. I mean, he said, honestly, you could leave it as is, and it would naturalize just fine, except, you know, then it's potentially a liability or a fire issue. So, you know, I think it's a sound decision that we've made to demolish it, but then the idea is that we're just going to let it naturalize on its own.
Is there any foundations in the ground?
No. Nope. There's no poured foundation or anything. I believe it's up, I believe it's on just little concrete cylinders like a typical shed.
It's on the same U block, in small sections?
You should, you should come up and tuck in the mic. There's two mics. Bring up a chair.
We only have one chair.
Yeah. If you're, you can grab a chair from the audience. Yeah.
Yeah. So, I don't know if you guys saw the pictures that were submitted. The house is basically, is basically on cinder blocks and not a full foundation. It's period, very periodic pier is up. I mean, it's, to say it's a house is a little bit of a stretch. It's more of a shed. And as for the garage, there's two walls, I think, still standing, maybe.
So, that must have a cesspool there, instead of a tile five system?
I don't think they had anything, they didn't have anything there. There is not even, I walked through the, the structure. There's no, there's no bathroom. I mean, there's trees growing up through the inside of the structure right now.
Okay. Exactly what somebody fall in the subject, you know.
Oh, no. That'll, 100%, everything will be taken out of there that is there.
Can you just, for the record, for our recording secretary, state your name?
I'm Nick Galanis from New Seaberry Homes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Number four, what is the tree preservation plan? So, I think we, this had come up originally two meetings ago, but the tree preservation plans will be prepared when the, at the time when the individual lots are developed. The tree preservation bylaw is not applied merely when land is subdivided. It's the, it's applied when the homes are developed, because if you look at the language, it references the front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks. You don't have setbacks on the right of way. I thought, I thought Evan had agreed with that, but I don't want to put words in his mouth.
I don't know if I ever, I responded to your email with certainty, Brian, but the tree preservation bylaw itself identifies a tree yard on a particular lot utilizing the minimum setback criteria of the applicable zoning district. So, if you can't establish a tree yard because there are no applicable setbacks, there are no protected trees. So, the most prudent approach for a subdivision in this case would be tree preservation plans or certificates of exemption if, if applicable, but in this case, I don't think they would, at the time of building permit, building permits being pulled for the individual homes. You have to be able to establish a tree yard to identify where and what protected trees exist on that lot.
So, when somebody goes for a building permit?
They, they will require a tree preservation plan should protected trees be impacted by the construction of the dwelling.
Okay.
All right. Number five, what are the details on the subdivision sign and lighting? So, there was a detail of the proposed stone sign that's included on the, on sheet C-5.1, the subdivision plans, and a single spotlight is going to be located in front just to illuminate the sign. There was also one street light that we proposed, which is shown on the plans as well at that intersection, the north, northern intersection of Osprey Court and Great Neck Road.
What about a stop sign coming out of the development? I'd like to see a stop sign because further down, the cottages, they didn't have a stop sign. The street comes out, and some nights, people just come right out, and, you know, so they put a stop sign in a line, you know, the white line.
Yeah. I think the, I, I don't have the plans in front of me tonight, so I apologize, but I think those are on the plans, but that's, that's pretty standard that we do that.
I think Ed has some information for us.
Madam Chair, just, that's one of my original comments, Dennis. That was all my original comments, as was a landscape plan and a lighting plan if there was lighting proposed. So, that's already something they'll include. And I just would ask, Brian, that, you know, you include sheet 5.1, which wasn't part of the original application set that I'm aware of, because I don't have it, but just include that with the package you resend.
Okay. Where will the USPS mailbox be located? So, we did determine that a cluster mailbox would be required, so we intend to have that on the easterly sideline of Osprey Court as you, as you pull into the site.
Now, is this something that he should, they should check at the post office?
That's what we do.
I would imagine they do.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
That location would be solely determined by the, by the postmaster.
And that's going to be added to a plan that we're eventually going to see, right?
Yeah. Yes, it would be. It will be on a plan eventually. I don't know at what stage the postmaster's going to weigh in on the actual location of it. That's.
No, I mean, on one of our plans? Will it be noted?
Right. Well, we can certainly show it, but until the postmaster has approved it, I'm not aware of that process yet, so I can show it as a tentative location.
Maybe you could put something temporary, just so that, okay. Yeah. I'd, I'd put it in as a tentative. I just don't want, I want everybody that's working on the project to be aware that's, that there's going to be a cluster mailbox.
Provide details on the water hydrants. So, fire hydrants, you know, we do have a typical fire hydrant detail, which I'd be happy to give you, but those standards are going to be determined by the Mashpee Water District. So, even our standard detail says hydrant manufacturer to conform to local fire department standards, so.
Okay.
And, you know, any, any plan for water distribution is going to have to be ultimately reviewed and approved by the Mashpee Water District.
So, Madam Chair, once again, on May 13th, Chief Phelan from the Fire Department, Mashpee Fire Department, provided comments saying, first of all, the layout was sufficient, does not require modification. The hydrant location at the end of the road that's proposed is good. The nearest hydrant leading to development is 570 feet before the entrance at the intersection of Red Brook and Great Oak, and he asked the question, can an additional hydrant be placed near the entrance, which would allow for fire apparatus? And since that application, or since that comment, I did receive a revised plan, and I'm looking for the date, Brian, but the revision date's not on here, so forgive me, but I do have a revised sheet C2.0 showing a hydrant at the front entrance of, of the development.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I believe he's completely complied with questions and issues that the fire department may raise. It wouldn't hurt to throw the fire, that fire hydrant detail on the sheets the next set.
And did we let Chief Phelan know that happened?
I don't know who may have communicated with him. It wasn't addressed to me. I can certainly do that. It was addressed to, I'm sorry, it was addressed to me and Evan.
I'd love.
Well, I didn't have the answer at the time either, so.
Yeah. I'd love it if you follow back, just so he knows that we took his comments seriously.
So, he did, he did get a response back from Mackenzie Morrison at BSC Group saying, hi, Chief Jack, please see the attached plan with the additional fire hydrant. So, at least he knows.
Okay, good.
So, it was done. Sorry. It's been a couple months. I looked at this.
I appreciate the backup. Number eight, Mr. Valzerini asked if the town could buy this land, and also if the subdivision entrance could be from Red Brook and not Great Oak. So, the applicant, we're here before you because the applicant has decided to subdivide this land, not sell it. So, you know, the proposed entrance is safer where it is than if it was going to be off Red Brook Road. if it was going to be off Red Brook Road.
I think so too. I went and looked at it more, and I said, it'd be better there, you know?
Yep. Next question is, is the depression located in the proposed open space of Vernal Pool? So, this too was, came up back at the May 15th public hearing, but, and the answer is no. As I previously stated, Matt Creighton, a professional wetland scientist from BSC, walked the site and confirmed that there are no wetland resources at all on the property or within, that would be affecting the permit, permitting of the site, i.e. within 100 feet. Matt and I specifically looked at the topography of the site, I showed him the two depressions that are there, and I said, please look at these areas. So, he had that information in hand before he went out to the site, and as I previously reported, there are no wetlands, and a vernal pool is a wetland resource area. Number 10.
So, if you, if you don't mind, I'm going to send you a document from, I think it's Wildlife and Fisheries, Massachusetts Wildlife and Fisheries, and it's the signs of a vernal pool, even when they're dry. I'm going to send it to you, and Matt can, he can write us a letter saying, I didn't see anything there in that depression?
I mean, we could certainly do that, Mary, but I guess my problem with the whole thing is that, you know, I take an oath, and I'm here as an honorable professional engineer, and it's like, you don't believe what I'm reporting to you, I have to get it from another professional?
Not you, Brian.
Write the letter, or, I don't understand, I thought we put this issue to rest.
Not you, Brian, of course, of course, but you're mentioning that there's a specialist in your organization, so if you're, if you're hanging your hat on his stuff, I've been looking at the vernal pool thing a lot, and this would be in lieu of us hiring an, you know, a consultant and charging it to you as the applicant, which we can, we have a bylaw that allows us to hire a consultant, I'm asking you to use your resources within your engineering firm to answer that question. I am very concerned about that depression, and that would, that would appease, would relieve my, relieve my concern.
Okay.
And, Brian, I am so sorry, I don't mean to say...
Call Ed.
No, and he's not a wetland...
It just seems like you're dragging us back for another meeting, for what? I'm a professional engineer, and I'm telling you that a professional wetland scientist looked at the site and said, no, I mean, what more can I do?
I mean, Madam Chair, with the...
I mean, yes, I can go back, but are we going to do this ad nauseam?
With the revised plans he's going to provide, I don't see any reason why he couldn't provide a letter from his professional wetland scientist. I will at least want, I will want at least document on the record that when I did the site walk back in early May, I went to those depressions, because I saw the depressions for the same reason you thought of it, I thought of it. One of the test pits was actually in the bottom of the deeper one, and I wanted to make sure there wasn't any wetland species there, and there were none. Yes, I'm not a registered professional wetland scientist, but I have 40 years of experience doing this, and I know when there's a wetland resource, even if I'm not comfortable making a full decision, I know enough to ask another person. In this case, I did not see any wetland species either obligate or otherwise that were there, so I feel comfortable that the answer you're going to get is the same answer, but I think if he's preparing revised plans, submitting them to the board, I don't see any reason why he couldn't just document that too.
Okay, thanks, all right.
I agree with Ed, I agree with Ed, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right, number 10, how can we address concerns from neighbors about construction noise? We would expect that noise complaints would be handled in the same way that you handle them at present, but what I can say beyond that is that, is that Nick has spoken with Steve Johnson, who is one of the abutters who had requested that, you know, he speak with the developer. I know they've discussed, talked on at least one occasion, and he assured him, you know, we're going to, that New Seaberry is going to do their best to mitigate any noise, and they have an open relationship now, so if something happens, I would expect that Mr. Johnson would, would call Nick, and New Seaberry would deal with it right away. This is, you know, they've built thousands of homes in Mashpee, I don't know if that's the right number, but...
Are you going to settle time limit, those seven o'clock start to 4:30?
Maybe not those time limits, but it will definitely be a reasonable time limit. I have, I've talked to Steven today, actually, as well, and had him in our office after the original meeting where he came up, and very great guy, and I think we're, we have a good relationship right now. He actually said, should I be here today? I said, you don't have to be if you don't want to, and he said, I'm comfortable with the conversations that we've had on how to mitigate this.
All right, another thing...
So, wait, 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 so, so you can pick the construction times, or we can? So, we always put something in about construction times, we always do, Dennis always does.
We can work, yeah.
So, so think about what you want to put in.
Correct.
Dennis can send it, or you, so...
Yep.
All right?
No Sundays?
No, definitely, no, yeah, no, definitely not.
And then the final question, which I received this morning, says, what square footage of the open space will be used for storm water management? So, I looked at it three different ways, and I'll report all three ways to you. The drainage easement that we're proposing within the open space contains 8,831 square feet, and that is equal to 4.9% of the total open space. Based on the hydroCAD modeling, in a 100-year storm, the water surface will occupy 4,472 square feet, that's 2.5% of the open space. And then lastly, during construction, a total of 5,876 square feet will be disturbed to, to actually construct the infiltration basin, and that represents 3 1/4% of the total open space, and as you know, that provision of the bylaw allows up to 10%, so we are in compliance.
That's where that question came from, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, thanking for, from board members, for the patience of, you know, us just getting those 11 items out of the way up front, is, which way do you want me to start, from Karen or Rob with questions? Karen?
Not yet, ready.
Oh, okay, Rob, do you have any questions?
Just on the, light on the signage, you said, one overhead street light and one on the sign, is that going to be ground base up or top-down?
Well, originally, back at our first meeting, I think you had made the suggestion about the spotlight, and I was originally thinking that we'd put it on top of the sign, pointing it down, but you had said, on the ground, pointing up, so I think that makes more sense. It's just a single, you know, residential style, it's not going to be any, you know, crazy industrial spotlight, it's going to, a very tasteful spotlight on the sign.
Okay, yeah, I would, but I'm not sure about the night lighting from bottom up, shining...
Is that allowed in our sign code?
You mean, in terms of light projection into, like, neighboring properties and things like that?
Or, I guess, there's a, what, a night, a light in the night ordinance or something like that?
Well, for like, we do, we generally have imposed conditions for like dark sky compliant.
A dark sky, that's what I meant.
And so, we're talking about one light, not an interior lot illuminated, so I guess, Brian, we're just talking about a conventional landscaping spotlight up on a sign.
Exactly, a conventional residential, you know, style spotlight right on the sign.
If you drive up the street a little bit more to the cottages where landscape lighting is up, you'll see those, they're very dull, they just light up the, the bottom of the sign, they don't, you know, not obtrusive to...
I have a concern, though, when I'm coming down South, going Great Oak Road, I'd like to see that lit up more, so I know, hey, maybe a car coming out of there at nighttime, because people go like 40 miles an hour from that point, and all of a sudden, that light, people know that there, a car comes out, we could have, you know...
Well, I think that was the other light that we had proposed for the overhead light.
Yeah, something so everybody knows, hey, there's a...
There's a sign light and a...
Across the street, Dennis, will be a proper street lamp, lighting the intersection, and then the sign would be uplit with a conventional landscape lighting. We could craft an appropriate condition relative to the landscape lighting so that it is contained, but just so it's enumerated in the, in the permit.
Yeah, my only concern about the sign lighting, not the overhead, is that drivers, some signs still in this town, as you're driving down the road, you get white light right in your eye, and I would like you to have provisions to have a lot of ample light on the sign, but no white light directly in the driving path.
Yeah, where the sign is proposed, there won't be any of that.
And, and again, the sign will be uplit, so it's facing away from the street.
Away from the street into the subdivision, it's going to hit the sign.
I know what you're saying, though, some are not positioned right.
Especially when you get older, that really bothers you.
Yeah, no questions, no questions.
No, you already asked my questions.
Okay, I asked my questions, Karen?
The vegetation plan, that open space is pretty much treeed right now, isn't it?
Yes.
So, how much of that space, what percentage would you say would you be cutting through, cutting down to take out those barn or whatever's there that you're going to remove?
A percentage, a very small percentage of the total open space, yeah, I don't want to venture a guess.
So, most of the tree, many of the trees will remain, and then the natural growth when those trees are, but those buildings are removed, that's fine.
And the existing tree canopy that's there is such that it's not like when this is demolished, there's going to be this big opening, there won't be.
Just refresh my memory again, what will be the setbacks on the lots?
15 and 15 and 40.
15?
Forty and...
It's the minimum required of the, of the applicable zoning district, so despite being a cluster with smaller lot sizes, they're asking to maintain the minimum required, so 15 to the rear and side, and 40 in the front.
Forty to the front.
Okay, so that 40 would be where the tree, tree yard is?
Correct.
Yeah, so you would come before us again on that, I presume?
No, that would, the tree preservation bylaw would be done administratively through the planning department.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no more questions from board members, I'd go to the town planner and the board engineer.
I suppose the only thing I would note, and I appreciate the clarity on, is I was under the impression that the shed slash house was a full solid wall foundation, which is why when I saw the demolition note on the plan, there would be a sand pit essentially left, which is why I had mentioned a potential renourishment of the site. So, I was assuming that it would have been prudent to at least spread some organic material to assist in the reforestation, but given that there's a tree growing through the house, I guess that concern is relatively mitigated, but that was where I was coming from.
Okay. All right, Ed?
I actually think, once they remove those two buildings, in six months, you won't even notice they're there. You can barely see they're there unless you go and look for it, really, I mean, they're, this time of year, of course, with the leafing out, but it should be in pretty good shape. Madam Chair and the rest of the board members, I just wanted to say, I think that their, BSC is a way forward to mitigate and to address all my previous comments, and if you're, this is kind of that step where sometimes you do take this step, and I wanted to just recommend, if you'd like, you could vote to approve this project based on condition that they would have to address all my engineering comments, and also, you know, obviously address the revisions to the plan that they've discussed tonight, so I've taken...
Yeah, I think, I think I'm going to keep the, the meeting open, the hearing open for a couple of reasons. One, you know, get you all the plans that you need with all the dates, that letter that we spoke about, and also give us a chance to draft up a decision with conditions that the applicant will have a chance to look at in open session, with a public hearing open, do you know what I mean? Because if we close the public hearing and we make a decision, and you'd like to comment on that, we can't take your comment, so that's usually what we do. But thank you, Ed. Okay, so, I see a couple of familiar faces in the audience, is there anybody that would like to make public comment on this matter? And I think I'm going to ask you guys to make some room at the microphones for people, for the public to speak. Yeah. So...
Can we just continue the public hearing?
I think we need to continue the public hearing, I just want to kind of do a straw poll of the members of the board, the one thing that I was really concerned about was that traffic intersection.
I like Catherine saying, because I wouldn't want a stop sign.
That's the only thing...
If you go into New Seaberry, it's going to be a disaster.
Yeah.
I have no problem with this project.
Okay, all right. All right, so, I think there's some plans that we're going to get from, some updated plans that we're going to get from the project proponent, and how long do you think that would take, Brian?
We'll put it this way, when's the next deadline, when's the soonest deadline? Because we can be ready in a week.
Okay, and Evan, what are we going to do about the decision? Do we want to, do we want to kick it to town council? Because she offered to do that for us.
That's up to the board, I mean, I'm here two days a week, I can write the decision.
Okay.
And refer it to council perhaps after taking initial draft?
Yeah, she, she, she wanted to, you know, because we have new town council, and they wanted to, they're going to go through all of the town's documents that get issued one at a time, so this would be an opportunity.
I guess it would be, I'll prepare a first draft and submit to town council for a final review.
Okay, so, do you think it's, I don't have my calendar open.
31.
Next meeting's this August 7th.
When is it, Deb?
August 7th.
Correct.
At 7:10 and 7:15.
Yes, Nick, yeah, 7:10.
Yeah, because our first meeting in July was, was the 3rd, and we didn't have one, so this is our, yeah, so it's August 7th at 7:10 and 7:15, so that's good with you, Brian, you'll have everything done? And to Ed?
August 7th being the public hearing, can you give me a new date on when you need the materials?
It just, it depends on Ed's schedule, so when do you need those plans?
So, Brian, if you could just put a cursory response letter to all my comments saying, yep, we fixed this, it's now shown on sheet such and such, yep, we added that, yep, we responded, so on, just put a comment, response to comment letter with your revised plans? I would say I could turn that around in a couple of days. If you're two weeks from now, that'll be perfect, so not next week, I have kids and grandkids, the following week, so that would be, that would be perfect, so that would be the first week in August, right? Wait a minute, let me just look at the schedule, it'll jump right at us before we know it, right?
Did you, did you want to say something?
Not on this, but other megaphones.
Yes, don't worry about that.
Okay.
So, if you could get it to me, if the meeting is on the 7th, if you could get it to me by the 29th, the week of the 29th, 29th to 30th, I'll have it done before that week is out, all right? So, if there's any little tweaks or something, you'll have time to respond, because I'd rather you just show up with it all being addressed, and, and, you know, you've got an opportunity to look at the draft decision. Would the draft decision, do you think, be ready by then?
I'd probably come in on Tuesday of next week to write the draft.
Okay, very good.
Okay, with that, the Chair would take a motion to continue the public hearing regarding the special permit for a cluster subdivision to 7:10 on August 7th.
So be it.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The Chair would entertain a motion to continue the, the public hearing on the definitive subdivision plan to 7:15 on August 7th.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All, any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any new materials that were submitted in the packet, you can get from the town planning office.
I think my title's planner consultant now, if you need to use that.
Planner consultant, okay. All right.
Just thinking exactly the same thing.
So, I do have public comment on the agenda, so if anybody would like to make public comment, is it about an, yep, is it about an item that's on the agenda? Okay, then come on up.
Okay, thank you.
Otherwise, I'd ask you to just save until then. And just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Jeff Tomczyk. I live at twenty Oyster Way in Mashpee.
I know where that is.
You know where that is.
Hi, and I'm Mark Khan. I live at twenty-four Oyster Way.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So we're here to talk about two lots that are, we both abut on that street, on that cul-de-sac, twenty-two and twenty-six Oyster Way, that are currently in an unbuildable, or I should say, very unbuildable status.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Sure, sure. So, these are in an unbuildable status. They have been for decades, and the current owner, I guess they were, the lots were gifted to her back sometime prior to 2020, and at that point, she went to the tax assessor and confirmed their status of actually very unbuildable, and to ensure that the taxes were nominal and reduced, such that she was paying based on lots that couldn't be built upon. So the value is very reduced. So similarly, in the town, or Sandalwood, which is the development, right, those two lots were in arrears for a long, long time on overdue HOAs. So the board went to small claims court to see if they could collect on those dues, and they ruled in small claims court for the fact that they were unbuildable and they could not collect. So that was sort of another scenario where these were, you know, unbuildable. Now, the lots initially, they're, they were connected, but they were then subdivided, and to be initially, as the plan says, developed not as separate lots, but in any event, there is a build, or a home, marks, in between twenty and twenty-two, rather, and twenty-six. So these two lots do not abut one another. They're not adjacent, right? They're separated. So, fast forward to nine-twenty-one, right, she presented with the town planner in agreement that they could potentially use, or not potentially, use the back of the properties for the required frontage, because what I failed to mention is the frontage on Oyster Way is barely enough to get a driveway in. In fact, it would be difficult. But, so they needed the frontage, so they claimed that they could use that on an ancient way behind, or what was referred to as River Road behind the property. Now, with that, she leveraged that A and R, the approved A and R, to market the properties as approved for building, and she marketed those actively in real estate and had many takers. I believe one of the lots actually went under agreement at one point, came off. So after, once those lots went on the market, I consulted with a person that was a town planner in another town, very familiar with law. They went and did extensive research on the public records associated with what is referred to as, kind of like Mashpee River Woodlands, okay, if you will. So establishing that, the boundaries that were put into eminent domain in nineteen-eighty-six, established that all of that property, including River Road, is now part of town land taken into eminent domain in nineteen-eighty-six, and is clearly established in public record.
But not these two lots, just River Road?
River Road, exactly, which was being claimed as available frontage. So it's not a road, so therefore can't be claimed as frontage. So all of this information was presented to Evan, Rodney, Dave, in a couple of different meetings that we had, and it was agreed that, and they passed along that information to town council, and town council agreed that, in fact, there was a reason to pause and consider that, yes, they are in fact part of the town, and it is not River Road.
So when did it go to town council?
This was back in, I would say, January of this year.
Okay.
Yeah, we went to the town manager, he went to town council.
Yep, okay.
So, as you may or may not know, River Road does come out to Great Neck South, it dead ends, pavement ends, you know, from there on, it's all eminent domain, town land. So it's not a road, and obviously...
I used to drive down there years ago.
Yeah, right. But it isn't a road. So therefore, you know, it is suspect in terms of the due diligence that was performed, in terms of establishing whether or not that could be, in fact, used as frontage, given that it is not a road, and therefore, you know, Rodney was very good in terms of wanting to get to the bottom of it, but given the fact that it is a fairly complex matter, but a very important one, because it has downstream implications for other properties that abut this conservation land, he wanted to wait until an if a building permit was applied for, before he continued research with town council. And I think it was basically because of the expense associated with it. I don't know. But in any event, that commitment on the town, I appreciate, and of course, want to make sure that that commitment stands, right? It's in the best interest of all parties, particularly the town, and especially the abutters, because of this situation. You know, in looking at this road, it is essentially an illusionary road. It's not real. So therefore, you know, an A and R being approved based on that, I think should be rescinded. I think that that A and R should not exist. Furthermore, as I mentioned, I want the town's commitment on following through with the additional research associated with this, and I think it's imperative for the town, especially everything that we've gone through in this town, okay, with regard to land clearing, et cetera, we've got a tree ordinance now, you know, we're all over it, right? Maybe decades too late, but we're all over it. So it's imperative that this property be left in its natural state until such time as a ruling is made, one way or another. So I implore the town to make sure that that does not happen, that it remains as it is. It was surveyed as recently as April for a second time. So that gives me reason to believe that there is continued interest in developing these, right? Otherwise, she wouldn't have gone through this trouble. She's even taken, you know, building loans, et cetera, that is public record as well. Additionally, and I've talked to Evan about this, it would be probably in the best interest of the town to acquire this property into conservation. It abuts conservation. It's an absolutely beautiful area, and it would be, I think, a shame to do anything but try to acquire it into conservation. And Evan has talked to the owner about that. Furthermore, and my last point here is, if you have been on Oyster Way, you'll understand that it's a very small cul-de-sac. I mean, it's tiny, well-maintained, the whole neighborhood is, right? Sandalwood does a great job. These two driveways would be literally sandwiched between driveways. In fact, one of the driveways would have to go through a mound that is twenty feet tall, and it would have to go back a hundred and fifty feet before that could even get to a parcel of land that could be developed, and then there are fifty-foot setbacks from the conservation land and sides and so on and so forth. It's not ideal. The other one, on the other hand, drops forty-five feet from the road, straight down into wetlands, which wouldn't be on the town map as wetlands, but believe me, I lived there, and it gets super wet, right? So that is another big concern, and, you know, neither one of those houses would be visible from the street, which is also, you know, a safety concern for fire and police, et cetera. But, so that's, that's my story.
So, so I don't want to discuss it, because it's public, we're not supposed to discuss anything back.
Yeah, understand.
Why don't, as chair, mull this over and see if I'm going to put it on the next agenda for more discussion.
Can I talk for a second?
Yes, yep.
Jeff and myself, our only reason coming here was to make the planning board aware of what is happening here, and, you know, the facts, because when this happened, when we caught wind of this back in 2021, when the owner of the property applied for an A and R and received it, this was based on an assumption, not a fact, and the fact can only be proven if the town approves the funds for this to be investigated properly, as far as is indeed this is conservation land and part of the town forest, because, as you know, when you come down to the end of River Road, with the pavement stops, the town forest begins, and this is, this old dirt road is through it. That's why we're asking to consider rescinding the A and R, because, again, it was an assumption, not fact. If it gets proven otherwise by research going forward, fine, you know, we understand.
Okay. Yep, so I, I, let me mull it over a little bit, maybe talk to town council, I mean, not the town manager, and, I mean, I'm leaning towards putting it on the agenda because I can tell that other board members want to say things.
Yeah, we presented...
But we can't, we can't say anything.
Reams, as much paper as you have there?
Oh, no, okay.
So, and it's all public record.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming.
We appreciate your time. We just wanted to make you aware of the situation.
Thank you so much.
And the town manager and the town planner knows how to get in touch with you, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, good.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Have a great evening.
Anybody else with public comment? And that's what public comment is for. Right there. Not much. Not much, because we flew through a lot of it before. But there's some important stuff, I know, that Evan has. LCP. Ed, Ed has reports.
Lynn Barby Surf Drive. I wish I could make the noise of a broken record, because I feel like I'm a broken record. I see under Old Business, the Aquay Highlands, and I just want to make sure that everybody still knows that that huge mountain of dirt is still there.
I saw it yesterday.
And I want to know who's responsible for that. Who is, who does one have to talk to to make that go away? It's dangerous. There are children that live around there, right next door. One huge storm and, I don't know, it'll be all over the road. I mean, supposedly, they were supposed to remove it, but only removed a little bit of it. You see it, right?
I went there yesterday to see it, because they haven't done nothing in a month.
Oh, gosh, whiz, whiz, Michael.
Oh, yeah.
Whoops.
He's not asleep?
No, please.
I think at one point, maybe Evan had said it was the health department had to get involved, because it's not the building, it's not under construction, whatever. It's just, for the people who live there, it's horrible, but it's dangerous, and it's also very bad practice, I think, to just let people get away with having a mountain of dirt in a neighborhood. So the only other question I had was, there's, Old Business has an update on the workshop. Are we going to actually be talking about Raisin Replace today, or is that just a report from the workshop? No?
I don't know.
Okay.
We haven't gotten there.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, then I will make one other comment about that, which is that I read through the materials that are in the packet, and it, I wish somebody could explain to me why it would be so important to wait for the state to come out with its rules when we can make our own rules. If the state DEP has something more, stronger rules, we could adopt those. If they have weaker rules, we probably don't want those anyway. We want stronger rules. And I just really hope that somebody could answer to me what the point of waiting is. We waited for years to start the sewer and it got more expensive. Let's not wait on having our own bylaws for this. Thank you.
Any other public comment? And I will, if you want to, if you want to do public comment about Raisin Replace, let's just wait till that matter. Is that okay? Any, any public comment, we accept, on anything that's not on the agenda. Pile of dirt?
That's the...
Well, we can, I'm sorry, we can go right to the Old Business review of requests for potential vote to release of Aquay Highlands, so.
Can I just raise something on that, the dirt pile? I'm thinking of a case that I represented a kid who drowned in a pile of dirt in Florida.
Yep.
It's called an attractive nuisance, and that should be removed. It should be removed right away, and I don't know who, who has authority to remove it.
It is definitively the building commissioner, just as with the other construction materials. And prior to my last day, I did suggest to the building commissioner that unless the developer has permits for the remaining lots, there is no reasonable justification for maintaining the material. That's generally been the hat, that hook that he's hung his hat on, is that he's been building homes. To my knowledge, there are no active permits within that subdivision, and thus, logic would lead us to think that those materials should be removed unless a permit is imminent. With regard to the material, that's definitively the building commissioner. Many have alleged, you know, there's like an earthworks operation there, and that, again, would be the sole determination of the building commissioner, and he is the one empowered to enforce against it.
So why don't we write, write him a memo? Are you guys okay with me writing a memo and using the words attractive nuisance? A potential attractive nuisance?
Lots of case law on that.
I would agree that a memo to the building commissioner would be worthwhile. I do want to note, however, that the dirt pile and the materials for home construction that he's storing on the vacant lots are kind of outside the subdivision issues you're covering in the tripartite agreement.
Oh, so we could not hold up the tripart agreement?
His agreement identifies specific performance requirements, and your job is to say he has performed or he has not performed those requirements.
Got it. Right, okay.
Can I, can I just add a little bit to that, just for everybody's benefit? I was with Mr. Moore yesterday, because I really wanted to look at the site before I came here to the meeting. So he has satisfied everything I've asked him to do. He reseeded some areas that we were looking at before. He reseeded the four bays of the two detention basins on Carriage Road that DPW Director Laurent had asked for, and a seat is taken, and he's reseeded the top where he moved some trees and cleared the top of the detention basin, so things are looking pretty good. And I point-blank asked him, there's less dirt there than there was a month ago, and there was a bark mulch pile, that's gone, and there was some equipment there, that's gone. In fact, he said the neighbors had complained about the equipment near the dirt pile, so he moved it to a place in Marston's Mills that he has access to, and vandals destroyed it all. So no, no, no rest for the weary, right? So no, nothing there. He said he had thought he might have had that dirt pile gone by now, had it been for a contractor who was going to bring a screener there, and he sold his screener, so now he's working on two other guys to get bids on it to screen that loamy soil so he can get rid of it.
So much of this story, I can't...
Right. So he wanted to be gone already. Some of it's gone, most of it's gone, the pile, the big pile, there was two piles, one on the left, one on the right. The one on the right's been there so long, there's grass and weeds and everything growing up on it, so it's stable.
Couldn't he just truck it out and have it screened offsite and...
So it's on top of... It's on top of two lots. It's on top of two potential building lots. So there's some motivation, obviously, to sell the lots and to build and develop them someday. So it's not going to stay there forever, obviously. But yes, the answer is he could...
That's another condition for all of our subdivision.
Yeah, he...
It's like you cannot store things on lots.
Right. He can certainly move it. He wants to move it. I can only tell you, he does want to move it. He just thought he'd be able to move it by now, and some contractors have let him down. So he's now making other arrangements. I can't tell you when that'll happen. He couldn't tell me when it'll happen. But I can only tell you that he's aware of it. He is certainly wanting to get rid of it.
Thank you.
Maybe we should say, since it's a hazard, the town will take the responsibility from removing it, and he'll get paid, he'll have to pay whatever the town's got.
You know, I'm not, you know, the attractive nuisance, is that what the term you had?
That's what it's called.
So that's a, the, because again, there's no, outside of a wetland, you know, there's no real prohibition against filling a lot. You can change the elevation of your lot. But the nuisance part of it is a different component. I think we've discussed construction fencing before, to at least secure that pile. That's something that we could note in the memo to the building commissioner, something he could order. I just mean to mitigate access by the young folk.
I think we'll just use potential attractive nuisance and let the building commissioner figure out how to interpret that, and yeah.
And in regards to what Evan had just said, all the different things regarding the tripartite agreement he has done, he has, he has performed satisfactorily. You know, in the last several months, over the last year, we've done a lot of things there. We've added some drainage systems that weren't performing perfectly because of the way it was originally built. And now it drains better with a new inlet, curb inlet structure, and did maintenance, performed maintenance on the detention basins. Those look great. Did the final paving, also looks good. Put in the cluster postal boxes. That's all finished, all the other things, right?
You have a letter in here.
Right. So that memorandum just says that, you know, I, at the last inspection, he had to do two things. Finish seeding some areas that he maintained inside the detention basins and install some signs. The signs are installed. He had already contracted with DPW to purchase them. They arrived, they arrived. And Tuesday, when I showed up, he had just put them in that morning because DPW gave it to him. It just happened that timing had to come together so well. So in my memo, I'd said, okay, well, why don't you vote to approve the release of the tripartite agreement? And as soon as the grass comes in and is more mature, I can put a memo to the file saying it's done and go ahead and release it to him. So that way, your vote's done. You don't have to bring this up on an agenda. It doesn't have to come in any more meetings, et cetera. Except when I met with him yesterday, he said, Ed, we're trying to close on the loan. The bank is expecting, in fact, at the June meeting, we thought you'd be releasing it, and the board was more comfortable with waiting for your final report. I said, okay, then, when I think about it, the tripartite agreement is the only surety, if you will, that's left on the project. So how about if we hold $2,000? You give a cash surety to the town, write a check for $2,000 at Town and Mashpee. In case the seed doesn't work, they can go out and hire somebody to reseed those minor spots. He agreed. So he sent that in an email today, and I endorsed that in the email today. It was sent to Karen and me and Evan, and I responded and endorsed that later this afternoon because it just happened today. So he's just asking, hey, can you release it? I'll agree to hold the cash bond or to provide the cash bond so you could vote to release the tripartite agreement. Again, in all honesty, he's done everything we've asked him to do, yet I felt like it was necessary to hold some surety so in case you had to hire a landscaper to come out and reseed it in September, because it's really not going to be till September when that grass is mature enough and stable enough for me to say it's fine. He is watering it. He installed extra irrigation heads. There is irrigation for part of the site on Carriage Road, so that's great. Because that's usually the problem. They seed it and they never take care of it, right? So he's constantly in there with his team. He was there the day I was there yesterday. It was evident that he had been doing that all along. So he's motivated to try to finish that off. And I think if we just hold that minor cash bond that kind of leaves that till the final step is completed. It is technically complete, but I'm not comfortable saying everything's 100% done until the grass matures a little more, that's all. Just like I do on every other project. I wait for the grass to mature, say, yep, it's good, it's stable, we're happy.
From a subdivision perspective, it doesn't necessarily matter what form the security takes. So he could swap one out for a different form at any time. So the suggested cash security would be adequate in the event you decided to release the tripartite because you're appropriately secured for the outstanding line item that Ed's identified.
So we could post, we could tell him to post the $2,000 security, and then contemporaneously, we could release the tripart?
Yes.
Yeah. Right.
Makes sense.
I entertain a motion to release the tripartite agreement?
Just a, sorry, Mary, a question for Ed before you make the motion. Is $2,000 the total amount of the work? Or is that include, does that include the 50% kind of cushion that the board adds?
Yeah, I assumed it was about a $1,500, $1,200, $1,500 job that could be done, so I just rounded it up to $2,000.
Okay.
So...
$2,500? Be safe? Okay. Do you want to make the motion?
We're going to discuss $2,000, right?
I know.
I discussed $2,000 with him.
For things reasonable, I think a motion would go for support that.
Okay. Accept a motion to release the tripartite agreement provided a $2,000 cash bond is submitted to the town by Aquay Highlands Realty Trust LLC to complete item number two as described by our board engineer, Ed Pesci, in a memo dated July 15, 2024, with the subject remaining punch list items, Aquay Highlands Subdivision Mashpee Mass.
Second.
Any discussion? All in P. V. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Mary, did Karen provide to you the release document for tonight? It was in the last packet. If, if not, I'll have Karen coordinate with you all. We'll need each of your signatures.
No, that's not it. That's Chrissy's review.
What I'll probably suggest we do is leave the release document with the town clerk because I'm not going to be in the office, and your signatures need to be notarized. So that's what I will plan on doing and have Karen relay to you all tomorrow.
Do we all have to come in and sign it?
I believe I need a majority of the board.
Can she put it in the mailbox?
Certainly.
Playing board mailbox? That way, whenever you come in, you can go and sign.
Well, it needs to be notarized.
Oh, does it?
Yes.
If I come in tomorrow, somebody will be there to notarize it?
I'll, what I'm, what I was saying is, I think I, well, assuming Debbie is okay with this, I'll leave it in the town clerk's office so that Debbie can notarize your signatures. If not, Debbie, I'll speak with the town manager's office so Terry can notarize it for you.
I get it, okay.
And I'll let you know where it is.
All right.
All right, moving on. Okay, raise and replace. So in your packet, there's some materials that were distributed at our workshop on June 25. We're at the, at the library. So almost 20, almost 20 residents came. We had neighborhoods represented, the Pot Banisset neighborhood, Pirate's Cove, New Seaberry, John's Pond, and Ashumet Pond. So I want to thank everybody for coming. They got, Karen Leslie did a thank you memo, email to everybody, attaching tonight's agenda and the materials that were kind of passed out and gone over. There was also a note about, you know, let us know if you want us to tour your neighborhood. So if that's a good idea for the people that participated, just go back through Karen Leslie, and she'll poll the boards, the board members as to what's a good time. So I, I thought it was really a great workshop. I don't know if board members have any comments?
No, that was good.
Thank you, Karen, again, for bringing us through the bylaw. We're on like version three, right?
Right.
So we're getting there. If there's anybody from the public that, you know, after reviewing these documents, have some comments, you know, send them in to the planning department. You send them into Evan, just make sure Karen Leslie gets a, gets a CC. And I don't know if anybody wants to talk now. You're welcome to. What I think I'd like to do is, you know, have a tour and then get back together, kind of, later on in the summer. But if you, if, I see that there's at least three people in the audience that were there that day. If you want to come up and talk, you're welcome to, or, you know.
I don't think we need to go out. I think we want to thank you guys for holding it. I think it was really helpful. Yes, we welcome you guys coming touring Pot Banisset. We can discuss something with Karen. Okay, that's, you know, John, I spoke to them. So as the process keeps going, if you want to have anything to do, we're happy with that.
Okay, so that was Bob Orsi. Just for Chrissy. I know, I know. And it was kind of fun having just, like, only one item on the meeting agenda, so. Karen, do you want to, do you have anything? No? Okay.
No.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to move on to the next item, okay? Board engineer report.
Yes, the only inspection report I have to give you all is there's been some recent activity at Casper Circle to close it out. It's the small subdivision, it's a really old, old subdivision, that we did all the drainage review and binder paving review last year. It is now in the process of being final paved in August. So I went out and did an inspection recently with the new developer that bought all the lots. When I showed up out there, there's all these houses there where there were just vacant lots before. So apparently, they've obviously done all that work. It looked really good. They were pumping, last week, they pumped out all the catch basins as I requested them to do, to clean out all the catch basins. One of the last things I always have a subdivision do, to clean all the debris and sediment and pieces of brick when they go and construct everything. You can't avoid getting it into the basin sometimes. And there, when we walked around with the plan, they didn't have the plans. I had to give them the plans. When I walked around with the plan, I explained to them that they had paved over some of the structures before and that they just needed to bring them to the, to grade. So they're in the process of chiseling those out of the pavement and bringing the covers to grade. That'll be, it's common practice to do that, to pave binder, over binder. Happens all the time. He just didn't know because they weren't part of the project initially. The previous site work people gave him all the pictures of everything that was done, and it was really easy to establish what was going on. And so they're doing that. I'll be back out there to look at that work before they finish pave, and then we'll be out there to inspect the finished pavement. So for the most part, that's it.
Great. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
That was very helpful. Okay, we went through the chair's report. Back to town planner's report, LCP.
So I guess, um...
You did an email to the historic commissioner?
So I've been try, as I noted to you, to a month and a half ago, when we finished the implementation reviews, I transmitted all, transmitted all of the chapters to our consultant to put together the document. But one thing we wanted to try and capture, specifically in the heritage preservation section, was more of a substantive narrative about the Wampanoag tribe and Wampanoag culture in the community because I would say that, that particular element really lacked anything quality relative to the tribe and the tribe's history and culture. So I had reached out congruently with when I had transmitted to our consultants to put together, to the tribal historic preservation officer to ask the question if the tribe would be interested in authoring an insert into that chapter written by them in their voice to capture what I don't think we were successful in doing with the resources we had. And so I, I spoken with David about that. There seemed to be some interest. I just don't know what, if anything, has happened or transpired since then. But I've also forwarded the document to the historical commission. There are tribal members on the historical commission to kind of look at it through a similar lens, but also specifically to ensure that that element captures Wampanoag history, kind of, at the intersection of Wampanoag and town history, 1870 post incorporation, and to see if they can work together on providing that insert. Because I'd say that's really the last piece of the document that is really critical if we're going to bring it to town in a meeting. I did ask that the consultants send me the completed draft anyway in the event a succeeding planner comes in and I'm, and I'm not here through the fall or something like that. I'd like to see a finished document, more or less, with the understanding that should we get some traction with the historical commission and with the tribe, that that can just be inserted into that chapter. And I expect that dra, I'll be, I expect to be able to provide you a completed draft absent that insert that we're discussing now this week.
Can you take that whole email and send it to Brian Whedon?
Yes.
Because he's the, he's the chair of the council in that way.
I certainly can do that.
Awesome. And I think, Dennis, you wanted it to go to the Cape Cod Commission?
Yep.
Very soon.
As soon as I get the draft, I'll forward it to regulatory staff.
Hi, Ed, take care.
Thanks for coming.